We should be balanced. I'd agree with you.
We need to rebalance this.
We're poorly balanced. All right, Michelle. Okay.
Somehow I knew you did today.
Emily is real good. I am.
Oh, boy. Really?
You must be plotting for punishment. She's gonna time Jen and see. You have to run down the gauntlet. How fast we can make motions. We'll get out of here by 7:30.
We had nothing to do on a Monday night, Jo.
I remembered reading glasses.
If Barry had come, I would have been really concerned. Like, "Come on, Barry. Your first Monday night." Let me Jim had to print something out.
Oops. Too many bits and touches. All right. I need the glasses.
Can't help you now. This chair is foreign apart. Who do I requisition new board chairs for?
Wilson.
I think my father purchased these when he built the building.
He hears something, but he didn't know.
Yeah, he's like, "Wilson." Oh, he's good. He's good. Yeah, we were just upstate this weekend. My sister's son graduated high school there. So we're all back together. Still good.
Emily's gonna tag in for me tonight. Am I ready to take up this meeting?
Three minutes. I'll time you.
Three minutes.
He hasn't been able to accomplish anything in three minutes.
He misses you. He just won't admit it.
I really have to watch my news tonight.
I know. Are you ready, Jim?
I am.
Okay, welcome everyone to the annual reorganization meeting of the Board of Education. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh, I thought you didn't want to.
Pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as well. In the event of emergency, there are exits at the front and the rear of the auditorium. Kindly silence your cellphones at this time. Typically now, we administer the oath of office to the newly elected board members, both of whom are not here. So Bill already took his oath of office and Michelle will take hers upon her return. We'll now administer the oath to the Superintendent of Schools, Jim Plin.
We started with that, I think, inside.
I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of superintendent of schools according to the best of my ability.
We'll now accept nominations for the Office of President of the Board of Education for the 2019-20 school year. Christine?
I'd like to nominate Jen Hebert, please.
Do I have a second? Linda? Are there any further nominations? Okay, I have a nomination for Jen Hebert for President of the Board of Education. All in favor? That is everyone. And I will now accept nominations for Vice President of the Board of Education for the 2019-20 school year. Christine?
I'd like to nominate Jen Hebert, please.
Do I have a second? Linda? Are there any further nominations? Okay, I have a nomination for Jen Hebert for President of the Board of Education. All in favor? That is everyone. Yeah, I will now accept nominations for Vice President of the Board of Education for the 2019-20 school year. Linda?
I would like to nominate Christine Bernacki for Vice President.
I'll second that.
Do I have a second?
Thank you, Xavier.
Of course.
Xavier, that was second?
That's a second.
Okay. Are there any further nominations? Okay, I have a nomination and a second for Christine Bernacki for Vice President for the 2019-20 school year. All in favor? Okay, that is everyone. Congratulations.
Thank you, everyone.
I will now swear in both Jen and Christine.
I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of President of the Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
Here's where the fast read starts.
Is this stuff get done by me? I think all the district. My name is Bernacki. I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Vice President of the Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
Thanks, Joanne. Okay, I guess I pick it up from here. Okay. He's calling. All right, so after the election of board officers, that brings us to the appointment of officers. First one is District Clerk. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education, appoint Joanne Miranda as District Clerk for the 2019-20 school year. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Tom, second. Xavier, all in favor? Here we go. Okay. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education, appoint Joanne Miranda as District Clerk for the 2019-20 school year. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Tom, second. Xavier, all in favor? Here we go. Okay. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education, appoint Kim Zellman to the position of Deputy District Clerk for the 2019-20 school year. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Christine, second. Tom, all in favor? We're gonna get you all in and out of here fast.
I believe Tom broke a land speed record.
You just wait and see how lightning fast we are. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Ed, appoint Jill Miranda as District Treasurer for the 2019-20 school year. No relation to Joanne Miranda. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Linda and Tom, all in favor. I think we got Linda and Tom and all in favor. Okay. Just rotate. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education, appoint Jean Dunn to the position of Deputy Treasurer for the 2019-20 school year. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Xavier and Christine, a second. All in favor? Just try to keep up. Here we go. Oh, District Clerk, they have to take their own office. I'm like, "What do I mean?"
You can't skip that.
No, who does that? Oh, they do that there. Okay.
Joanne actually took hers.
Do it very gentle. Please stand by.
I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of District clerk according to the best of my ability.
Thank you very much. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education adopt the attached resolution establishing a standard workday for appointed officials. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Linda, a second. Christine, all in favor? And that's all of us. Okay, on to the attorneys. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education, appoint Gercio. Gercio is General Counsel for the school year 2019-20 with a retainer of $47,000 and a litigation rate of $265 per hour, 150 per hour for law clerks and 125 per hour for paralegal services. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Motion from Tom and a second from Xavier. All in favor? Yes. Labor counsel. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education, appoint Gercio. Gercio is Label Counsel for the school year 2019-20 with a retainer of $86,500 and hourly litigation rate for services of $265 per hour for litigation services other than those related to collective bargaining agreements between the district and its employee units. Can I get a motion? Okay, Xavier and Christine, all in favor. I just don't have that many choices, guys. You're gonna have to keep raising your hands. It's upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education, appoint R.S. Abrams &amp; Co. as the district's internal claims auditor for the 2019-20 school year at an annual fee of $38,400. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Tom and a second from Linda. All in favor? All right, my iPad is slow. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education, appoint Cullen and Danowski as the district's external auditor for the 2019-20 school year at an annual fee of $47,800. Can I get a motion? Christine and Xavier, all in favor? There we go. Down there. Okay, it is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education, appoint Serini and Associates as the district's internal auditor for the 2019-20 school year at an annual fee of $26,770. Can I get a motion? Tom and a second. Christine, all in favor? Okay, well, here's something now. We already have our audit, so we can go right ahead, right? So it is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education, appoint members of the audit committee for the 2019-20 school year as indicated, and it would be Tom Di Giacomo as one Board trustee, Bill Dwyer would be our second Board trustee, and Rich McGrath would be our community member. Can I get a motion? Christine, and a second. Linda?
Now, just so you know, you can manipulate this as you see fit as trustees if you want to change.
Anybody wanna fight Tom and Bill for those audit jobs? Wanna duke it out with them and all?
Didn't think that was coming.
No, then we're gonna go ahead and vote. All in favor? Yep. Okay, this one, though. Do we have people for policy? I didn't see the list.
All right, so this I left open because Barry served on it. She's no longer obviously available to do that. Xavier served on it, so I certainly welcome his returning if he is so inclined. And who was the?
Me.
Christine.
So would you two like to retain your spots on the Policy Committee?
I'm fine saying.
I almost feel like, I don't know if you have.
If you need me, I'm there.
Sounds like we got a third.
Okay, so motion to?
Yes. Okay, so it is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education, appoint three trustees, Christine Bernacki, Xavier Palacios, and Linda Diana, to the Policy Committee for the 2019-20 school year. Motion. Xavier and Christine, all in favor? You guys think a lot of yourselves, don't you?
The actual first meeting of the year would be prior to the August 5th Board meeting.
You're gonna put it right before, you mean?
Yeah.
On the schedule? Okay.
I'll miss that one. So if that's an issue, then we would need.
Hold it in.
Palermo. That would be awesome.
That would make it for a whole different Policy Committee. It is.
I would even go in.
Even a hall join onto that one. Okay. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education, appoint Corporate Medical Consultants, PC, as District Physician for the 2019-20 school year with a retainer of $56,500. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Motion from Tom and a second from Xavier. All in favor? Committee on Preschool Special Ed, Committee on Special Ed. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education, appoint members of the Committee on Preschool Special Education and the Committee on Special Education for the 2019-20 school year as outlined in the attached memorandum, which we all got. Can I get a motion? Xavier and Christine, oh, everybody, but all in favor? Okay. Oh.
What member to review?
This is perfect. Okay. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that Linda Diana be appointed to review CSE and CPSE minutes if needed outside of the timeframe of regularly scheduled 2019-20 board meetings and may accept associated recommendations proposed by CSE and CPSE on behalf of the Board of Education. Can I get a motion? Tom and a second. Christine, all in favor?
And just recall, due to the diligence of our special education administrators here, that is a rare need.
Yes.
On this end.
Okay. It is upon, excuse me, it is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education arrange for the appointment of an impartial hearing officer from the impartial hearing officer list in accordance with rotational selection process established in Section 200.2 EI and II and 200.2 B9 of the Part 200 Regulations of the Commissioner and the Administrative Procedures established by the Board of Education. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that Christine Bernacki approve the appointment of impartial hearing officers between board meetings on behalf of the Board of Ed should the need arise during the 2019-20 school year. Motion? Tom and a second. Xavier, all in favor? That one almost got me. Asbestos designee. Poor George. That's what you get to be, is asbestos. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education, appoint George Austin Lead Operations Manager to serve as asbestos designee for the 2019-20 school year. Can I get a motion? Tom and a second from Linda, all in favor?
Congratulations.
Yes, it's a giant honor for you. I'm sure. I'm gonna get a t-shirt made for you. Okay. Oh, I skipped. Wait. There we go. Central Treasurers. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education, appoint building-level central treasurers for the 2019-20 school year as delineated. For Finley Middle School, it will be Rosemary Fiorentino. For Huntington High School, it will be Patrice Boyle. And for Doc Abrams STEM School, it will be Blake Dunn. Can I get a motion? Tom and a second. Christine, all in favor? We're all good. God bless you.
Just to acknowledge that there will be a recommendation for the Woodholt Intermediate School, Central Treasurer. That'll probably be on the next meeting agenda.
It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education, designate Mary Beth Robinette as the, I was pronouncing the name wrong, I'm sorry, Robinette, as the Chief Information Officer, and Nancy Allard as the backup Chief Information Officer for the 2019-20 school year. Motion? Christine and second Xavier, all in favor? Okay, Civil Rights Compliance Officer. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education, appoint Kathleen Acker and Beth McCoy Assistant Superintendent as Civil Rights Compliance Officers for the 2019-20 school year. Motion? Tom and a second. Xavier, all in favor? It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that Mary Beth Robinette be appointed as the district's data protection officer for the 2019-20 school year. Can I get a motion? Tom and a second. Xavier, all in favor? Okay. Obviously, if anybody wants to jump in with questions, you can do that. I'm just gonna charge ahead otherwise.
I wonder if the laptop will?
Oh, thanks. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education, appoint Dignity Act coordinators and the associated support personnel for 2019-20 as delineated in the attached documentation. Motion? Christine and a second. Xavier, all in favor? Thank you. It's cool, I'm just gonna do it this way because I'm stubborn. Election personnel. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education, appoint election personnel for 2019-20 as delineated in the attached memorandum, which we received. Motion from Tom, second from Christine, all in favor? I didn't even have to ask for the motion that time. Let's go away. Health and safety consultant.
Got you right here if you need it.
Okay, you're right. Here I go. Sorry. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education, appoint Eastern Suffolk Bosse's to provide health and safety consultant services for the 2019-20 school year. Motion? Linda, second. Tom, all in favor? Okay, lead evaluators. No, but I have to go, I have to tune in because I need to read it for my thing, so thank you, but not thank you. Here we go. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education, appoint District Lead Evaluators for the 2019-20 school year as listed. Do you need me to read these off?
No.
You guys all saw them. Tom, I get a motion from Tom. I've got a second from Xavier. All in favor? Because I have to switch it off anyway.
I got you right here.
Liaison for homeless children and youth. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools, I hate this one, that the Board of Education appoint Gail Mahoney to serve as liaison for homeless children and youth for the 2019-20 school year. Can I get a motion? Christine and a second. Linda, all in favor? It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education, appoint Christine Doherty as the district's purchasing agent and Kathleen Acker Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Management Services as the deputy purchasing agent for 2019-20 school year. Motion? Christine and a second from Xavier, all in favor? Okay, Records Access Officer and Records Management Officer. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education appoint Joanne Miranda as the Records Access Officer and the Records Management Officer for the 2019-20 school year. Motion? Tom, second. Linda, all in favor? Residency Hearing Officer. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education appoint Kathleen Acker, sorry, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Management Services as Residency Hearing Officer for the 2019-20 school year. Motion? Xavier, second. From Christine, all in favor? Great. School pesticide, oh, here's another.
Sounds like.
This is another special title for George. School pesticide representative. I don't know which one is more glamorous, frankly. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education, appoint George Austin Lead Operations Manager to serve as school pesticide representative for the 2019-20 school year. Motion? Tom and a second. Linda, all in favor? And more congratulations. Section 504 Compliance Officer. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education, appoint Beth McCoy Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction as the Section 504 Compliance Officer relative to the Americans with Disabilities Act for the 2019-20 school year. Motion? Christine and Xavier, second. All in favor? Okay. Substance Use Resource Information Contact. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that Diana Rich be appointed as the district's Substance Use Resource Information Contact for the 2019-20 school year. Motion? Tom, second. Xavier, all in favor?
Thank you, Diana.
Thank you. For everybody that's being appointed these things, all joking aside, all kidding aside, we really do appreciate it. Building, oh, bonding of employees. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education, secure excess bonding as listed below for the 2019-20 school year. Should I read that?
You can.
Okay, so the Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Management Services is a million dollars bonding. Central Treasurers, which there are three, are $500,000 each. Deputy Treasurer, $1 million. District Clerk, $200,000, and District Treasurer, $1 million. Motion? Xavier, second. From Christine, all in favor? Thank you. Bank depositories. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education designate and authorize the attached list of banking facilities to receive school district deposits for the 2019-20 school year. Motion? Tom, second. Linda, all in favor? Newspapers. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education, designate Huntington News, Long Islander, The Times Beacon Record, and Newsday as the newspapers authorized to receive, print the district's legal notices for the 2019-20 school year. Let's get a motion. Tom and a second. Xavier, I have one question. The Times Beacon? I've never seen it seem.
That's the Times of Huntington, Times of Northwood.
Oh, it's the, under the, I got you. Okay.
We don't, we don't have to use all of these when a public notice is placed. And thank you. The second one is not doing so well, so it may not be around for much longer. Can you do that?
So only the other three?
Yeah.
Okay. We got a motion and a second. All in favor? Great, thank you. Okay, Certifiers of Payroll. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education, designate the Superintendent of Schools, the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, and the Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Management Services to certify all payrolls for the 2019-20 school year. Motion? Christine and second. Linda, all in favor? Petty cash accounts. Lights has gone dead altogether. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that petty cash accounts be maintained and administered by the designated employees at the location and in the amounts listed below. I'm not reading those.
No, don't. You don't need to.
Can I get a motion? Yes, Xavier.
They range, they range from $50 to $100.
Yes, so it's small amounts. Xavier and I had a second from Christine. All in favor? Tom's just gonna leave his hand up there all night. Okay, petty cash accounts. Oh, no, that was.
Nope, you did that.
Yeah, we did. Budget transfers. Oh, I can't do that. All right. It is upon, it is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board grants authority to the Superintendent of Schools to transfer funds within the 2019-20 budget as per Section 170.2 of the Regulations of the Commissioner of Education and Board of Education Policy 5330. Whenever any such transfer is made, it will be included on the subsequent board agenda as an informational item. Can I get a motion? Linda and a second. Xavier, all in favor? Grant and end. Here we go. So I'm waiting for you. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education grants authority to the Superintendent of Schools to apply for and sign all grant applications and reports for 2019-20 state and federal grants. Okay, I need a motion. Xavier and a second. From Tom, all in favor? Health services contracts. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education authorize the Board President and the District Clerk to sign and execute contracts for health services during the 2019-20 school year. Motion? Tom, second. Xavier, all in favor? You're really gonna help me along here, I can see. That's excellent. This is the same thing, right? It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education approve organizations listed on the attached as users of Huntington School District facilities for the 2019-20 school year. It's our approved facilities list. Can I get a motion? Xavier and a second. Linda, any questions about this? Because I know it was a big list. All of them? All in favor? Great. Okay, this is mileage reimbursement. Okay, this is mileage reimbursement. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools at the Board of Education approve the attached list of staff members to be reimbursed at the IRS rate for mileage expenses related to district business for the 2019-20 school year. We all got that list. I'm sure we took a look at it. Can I get a motion? Xavier, and a second. Linda, all in favor? Tuition contracts. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education authorize the Board President and district clerk to enter into tuition contracts as necessary for the 2019-20 school year. Can I get a motion? Tom, and a second from Linda. All in favor? Okay, oh, we're up to a board policy here.
This has been actually on the regular agenda in past years. It actually is better suited to be here, so we moved it.
This is Board Policy 4212, which is the district organizational chart, which we've seen year after year for 1920. So it is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education, oh, yep, we first read and issue final approval of Policy 4212, the organizational chart for the school year 2019 and 20. Can I get a motion? Christine, and a second. Xavier, any questions before we go ahead and motion on this one?
Are there any changes?
Yes, I was going to actually throw that in there. If you look toward the far right underneath assistant superintendent for finance and management services, you see listed director of safety, security, and security staff underneath. That is the material change here.
Okay, great.
Okay. Everything else is identical.
Excellent question. All those in favor? Great. Investment policy. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education reaffirm Policy 5220, district investments adopted initially on June 11, 2001. So I will need a motion for that. I got Linda, a second. I have Christine. All in favor? Great. Okay, purchasing policies. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools at the Board of Education reaffirm purchasing policy 5410, principles of purchasing, 5420, purchasing, competitive bidding and offering, and 5421, procurement of goods and services, 5422, alternative formats for instructional services, and 5430, contracts, yes, contracts for services and materials. Okay, do I get a motion? Can I get a motion for that? Christine, and a second. From Xavier, anything that needs to be said about this? Nope. All in favor? Readoption of all policies. That's a nice way to do it. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools at the Board of Education, re-adopt all other current board policies as presented in the Huntington Union Free School District's policy manual.
Unless you wanted to go through them individually.
No, I definitely do not want to do that, but it's, it's very good this way. Christine is the first, and I got a second from Linda. All in favor? That would slow us down considerably. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools at the Board of Education, adopt the revised district code of conduct. Okay, let's get a motion. From Christine, and a second, I got from Tom. Is there anything you want to say about this?
Yes, so we do plan to propose some material changes, but they are not ready to go at this point. To do so, you need to hold a public hearing, so when they are ready, we will have, certainly we'll give you advance notice. We will place a notice for public hearing and share the proposed changes with you in advance of that, but this will include some of the changes to the dress code and things that we've been working on, but just need a little more time to work through.
Excellent.
But as of now, everything will just roll forward until we get to that point to change.
Understood. All right. Any questions for Jim? All in favor? Okay, great. Guidance plans. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools at the Board of Education, adopt the attached guidance plans for each district, school, and the district as a whole for 2019-20. Motion? Xavier, second. Linda, all in favor? We've talked about these guidance plans, obviously.
We've had you, the Board has adopted or approved a district-wide plan every year based on new Part 100 regulations. We need to put a specific plan together for the district and for each school specifically. The major change to the guidance program in district for next year is our guidance services are moving down to the sixth grade level, and that is reflected in both the Woodhull and Jack Abrams STEM plans.
The earlier the better. Adoption of religious holidays. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education adopt the attached list of religious holidays for the 2019-20 school year for the purpose of state aid computation. Can I get a motion? Tom, and a second. Linda, any questions? All in favor? Okay, participation in the national school lunch and breakfast programs. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education adopt the attached resolution to continue in the national school lunch and breakfast program. Do you want me to read the resolved?
You can do it. Because that actually pertains to something that was discussed earlier about constraints in terms of what we can and can't do with our meal program, because we do have to abide by program requirements if this is adopted.
Okay, so here's the resolution. Resolve that the Huntington Union Free School District will participate in the national school lunch and breakfast program for the 2019-20 school year. All state and federal regulations pertaining to the school meal program will be adhered to by the Huntington Union Free School District. Okay, so I'm gonna need a motion. Christine, and a second. Tom, all in favor? Great. Okay, establishment of the school lunch prices. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education set school meal prices for the 2019-20 school year as delineated.
Unchanged.
Unchanged from last year, which is good news, actually. So can I get a motion? Tom, and a second from Linda. All in favor? Oh, my gosh, are you kidding me? Now I need a motion to adjourn our reorg meeting and enter our public session. I got a motion from Tom and a second from Linda. All in favor? All right, one section down, one to go. I gotta get my back up here. Hold on. Okay, people, thank you for hanging in with us. Pritchard. Here we go. Join me now. Okay, so I think we're saying the Fledge of Allegiance again?
No, I think we can, we did that once already.
And you've already been told where the emergency evacuation areas are. Okay, so we're gonna move on. All right, so we have more recommendations from our superintendent of schools. We have the meeting minutes of June 3, 2019. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education enter into executive session to.
No, no, no.
Oh, no, 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 sorry, I'm at the wrong thing. Wrong thing. There we go. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve minutes from the meeting of Huntington UFSD Board of Ed dated June 3, 2019. Can I get a motion? Xavier, and a second. Christine, all in favor? Hello tonight, wasn't catch up.
You need it.
No, I know, but the thing is, yeah, you know what, maybe, because mine is really slow, sorry. Okay, so this is the meeting minutes of June 27, 2019. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve minutes from the meeting of the Huntington UFSD Board of Education meeting dated June 27, 2019. Can I get a motion? Tom, and another from Linda. All in favor? Okay. Okay, now we have some FYIs. So we have an FYI about the budget appropriation reports for general school lunch and special aid funds as of 6/30/19. We have an FYI of budget transfers, an FYI of revenue status reports as of 6/30/19, and that brings us to the treasurer's report. Being stubborn, but I just want to say. Okay, it's upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools at the Board of Education approve the May 2019 treasurer's report. Can I get a motion? Tom, and a second from Linda. All in favor? And we have warrants for 6/5/19, 6/19/19, and 7/3/19. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools at the Board of Education approve the attached warrants which were certified for payment on June 5, 2019, June 19, 2019, and July 3, 2019. Can I get a motion? Tom, and a second. Xavier, all in favor? Fabulous. All right. That brings us to the board member communications and announcements. So if anybody has anything they'd like to share with our audience, floor is yours. Seriously, nothing.
Graduation was nice.
Yes, graduation was really nice. And Relay for Life was a success. Oh, that's true. Bit smaller than past, but I understand still raised a lot of money and just an honor to be a part of. It's a lovely night. It unfortunately doesn't have maybe quite the same enthusiasm that it had the first years out, because it's hard to sustain that kind of passion and enthusiasm, but the kids who turn out do an amazing job, and they certainly are raising money for a great cause. I totally agree. And a shout out to everybody who had something to do with the graduation, because it was beautiful, ran smoothly, really wonderful, such a proud, incredible day to be there representing the Board of Education, all those students in front of us. Best day of being a Board of Ed member, right, Mrs. Rogan? Is there anything else anybody had, though? Nope, moving on to you, Mr. Polanski.
So a couple of quick things. The recent state legislative session came to an end, and obviously there's a lot of back and forth there to get to the position that the legislature is in now, but one of the outcomes was bullet aid to districts across the state, and I am pleased to share, the Board already knows this, that we did receive $10,000 from the State Senate, thanks to Jim Goran, and $40,000 from the State Assembly, thanks to Steve Stern, and I believe Andy Ray had a hand in that as well, so thank you to them. And that is money with no strings attached, so we can essentially do with it whatever we please, which is nice. Thank you.
What was your suggestion? Barbecue?
I was just looking at these chairs. Yeah. He mentioned that his dad was responsible for purchasing those chairs for the original building back in, so that's not a bad idea.
I wouldn't mind seeing you go towards paper towels that actually wipe up water.
Moving on, I did forget to mention something at the last meeting, and I do want to acknowledge today a couple of our staff members who were honored at recent SEPTA luncheon at Red Distinguished Service Awards, and if I miss anybody, Christine, you're gonna jump in and help me here, but Frank Batista, outstanding music teacher at Finley Middle School, our high school choral teacher, Victoria Garberino, who's been doing a terrific job, and Anthony Trofa and Tim Witt as very inclusive coaches as a part of our lacrosse program. SEPTA every year does a nice luncheon at restaurant, they've done it at Red for the past couple of years. It's always a nice, nice experience for everybody involved, and those four were honored and deservedly so.
It's really nice that they honored teachers too, who are not specific special ed teachers, because I think it speaks to the fact that our general ed teachers are doing their very best to make sure that all kids are being included in their programs and the opportunities that they offer.
It's a very good point, and Frank and Victoria are not, they are general education teachers, and we continue to strive for inclusivity here, and thank you to Diana and her department for helping.
Thank you, Diana.
Lead the way in that regard. Mention commencement, there were loads of moving up ceremonies, and each one more dignified and enjoyable than the previous, so thank you to the principals and all staff involved in setting those up, and Class 2019 was sent off in the right way. We begin the summer with our summer arts program and our Huntington Booster Club programs, and just hordes of capital work that are taking place all over the district, so I'll issue my formal thanks for, I know it's an inconvenience and a lot of moving pieces over the summer, and we have our extended year program in a building that it's not typically in because the Woodhull parking lot was just shredded and being replaced, so thank you to everybody for your flexibility and understanding.
Very nice. All right, that brings us to public commentary. I think most of you who are out here are kind of.
They're about to be appointed, most of them, so.
Yes, that's what I was gonna say. Although if you are a resident or a faculty member or a student and would like to approach the mic and take three minutes to speak about something, we have no items for discussion in action, so it could be about anything except it can't be about a specific student or teacher. Now's your time. All right, then we're just gonna move on. Okay, so this brings us to Ms. McCoy.
It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve CSC, CPSC submissions as delineated.
Okay, so we all got that. Can we get a motion? Christine, and a second. Linda, does anybody have any questions about this? All right, all in favor? Thank you.
It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools at the Board of Education approve the fundamentals of precalculus one course option beginning in the 2019-2020 school year.
Okay, we all got that, you know, summary of what it's all about. Can I get a motion? Tom, and a second. Christine, does anybody have any questions or comments about this?
I have one question. What are, what are the levels that will still be in pre calc then? They'll be, if we put this in this year, it'll be?
All this is really doing is adding to an existing course an option to receive the college credit from Suffolk Community College.
Oh, so do the same course.
The same course, but there'll be some added work to be, it's a differentiated course.
But doesn't affect anybody's registration? It's just gonna, like, the first day or the first week they'll be asked?
So we had initially planned this for 2021, but Ms. McCoy and Cathy O'Fiero and whoever else was involved in securing the permissions, Monica Raz involved here as well, they just went through very quickly.
Right.
So rather than wait until 2021, this is not changing anything that's in existence, it's just adding that Suffolk Community College for credit op, it's a dual enrollment option that doesn't exist right now. Does not change.
So it doesn't change what exists, it just adds on to.
Correct, and there'll be a differentiation involved in the instruction and the work expectations for those who are taking the Beacon Program course.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Can, all in favor? I don't even know what I'm saying anymore. There we go. As long as all your hands are in the air, we're good. Personnel, and this brings us to you, and don't forget that one has to be taken out from Linda.
Yes, and that schedule is not in here, so I'm gonna do, hang on one second. All right, so I am asking the Board for approval of personnel items on schedules 1, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 10, 13, 15.
Nope, 16.
No, 16.
Skip over 15.
Like, she can approve the rest of 15, but 16, 17, 18, 19, and 22. Let's start with that. I'll make it easier.
Let's do that. Can I get a motion for those items? Christine, and a second. Xavier, okay, all in favor? All right, now let's circle back.
Now I am asking the Board for approval of items on schedule 15, numbers 1 through 9 and 11 through 22.
Oh, okay, so we're gonna do this and you do the one separately?
Correct.
Okay, so we've got a motion from Christine and a second from Tom. All in favor? That is, everybody, Linda, you can vote on this one, he's separating out the just one single one. There you go.
Good? All right, so now I'm asking for approval of item number 10 on schedule 15.
Okay, that's the one we held out. I've got a motion from Christine, I've got a second from Tom. All in favor? That is four of us and one abstention. Thank you.
Okay, I got a bunch of announcements here, so bear with me.
Yes, announce away.
And I'd like to thank the people, the folks in the audience for their patience, and they've certainly earned what's about to happen. First and foremost, we now have a principal of every, almost a principal of every school in the district. I'd like to introduce the next principal of Woodhull Intermediate School, Dr. Laura Gonzalez. Laura comes to us from the Oyster Bay School District, and I have been negotiating with her superintendent in terms of her time this summer, and they are replacing a couple of administrators there, so Dr. Seinfeld, Dr. Seinfeld and I agreed that Laura would start here on August 1, but the keys can be handed to you as of this moment. So welcome aboard, Laura.
Welcome aboard.
Okay, so teachers, I'm not sure who's here, because I can only see about Dr. Gonzalez's row in front, so if you're not here, we're gonna applaud you anyway. New to the district as a TESOL teacher, English speakers of other languages, Yilly Callahan. Here we are. New to the high school, but not new to the district as he is a product of it, Michael Corcoran, Science Department at the high school. Welcome aboard, Mike. New to the district in the Business Department at the secondary level, Greg Dietrich. New to the Music Department at the high school, we're playing a little musical chairs here, pun intended. Nicole Castaldo is shifting down to the elementary level, and we welcome James DiMeglio as our new orchestra teacher at the high school. Not new to the district, as she's been with us in leave capacity, but we welcome her aboard in probationary position, elementary level. She'll be teaching at Washington, Emily Franco. You know when there's a new teacher appointed at Washington, because Dr. Richards applauds very loudly, as she should.
I like that kind of enthusiasm. Keep it up.
New to the district also as a teacher of English to speakers of other languages, New to the district in the Physical Education Department, I think I saw him, Jordan Iviero. We are in the process of our continued librarian search, but we have two on the agenda tonight. First, Christine Mokli. And next, she's been with us in leave capacity, Shannon Ruckey will be assigned to Finley Middle School. And our interviews continue with a number of qualified candidates upcoming. New to the district in the area of Visual Arts, Jenna Rinaldi. I want to make sure I don't miss anyone here. Will be serving the district in a part-time social studies capacity, Elizabeth Messina. And we have a number of teachers who are filling in in leave capacity, but as we know, you do a good job, great things happen. At the elementary level, Alexandra Franco. I don't know if they're here tonight. In the area of ENL, Leah Goldberg. And reading, Nicole Lennon and Lisa Sajarto. Just bear with me, I want to make sure I'm not missing anybody here, and I don't think I am. Somebody kick me if I am, but I think we are good.
In terms of teachers?
Schedule nine, thank you. What's that?
Not for this meeting, for the last meeting. Schedule nine.
Just tell us, just tell us.
You may have to come up here and whisper in his ear.
Kath, he's saying Kath.
Now I'm just, now I'm just, okay.
Should I move on?
It's her birthday, so I don't want to...
Oh.
She wasn't here at the last meeting, so the announcement was made, so, and you were supposed to remind me before now. Dr. Kathleen Acker, who is also turning new age today.
One.
Well, she was also awarded tenure at the last meeting, so congratulations, Kathy.
So well, sir. Thank you, Dr. Acker.
Thank you, Ms. Hender.
Very nice. All right, moving on?
Yes.
All right, well, that actually brings us to Dr. Acker, because we are to the business portion of our agenda, so.
Okay, it is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve items H through P on this evening's business agenda.
Okay, we have H through P. Can I get a motion? Tom, in a second. Christine, any questions or anything? All in favor? Okay, that's everybody. We have three donations in the past, Barry always read them, so Christine, I think I'm just gonna bring it up.
Okay, I have my reading glasses, so we're in luck.
Oh, well, it doesn't, isn't that convenient?
Okay, well, we'd like to thank Ms. Katie Boschko for a donation of a certain kind of clarinet and a trumpet to the Huntington District Music Department, a donation of approximately valued at $400. So we thank her. Ms. Karen Cronin for the donation of a Yamaha upright piano for the Music Department with an estimated value of $2,000. And Ms. Barry Stevens for a Goldstein double bass to the Music Department, the Music Department is a big recipient today.
They were, they were big winners.
With an estimated value of $4,000, so we thank all of our generous donors in the district.
Thank you to them. All right, unbelievably, that brings us to our second public commentary section. Does anybody want to say anything at Mike, the podium? All right, then, that's the comments by board members, anyone, anyone?
I got one.
Okay, Tom?
I want to congratulate you, Jen, on another term as president.